Turnover me. Um, so, yeah, I don't know if Phyllis wants anything more formal. No, okay, all right. Uh, so this is gonna be fairly loose. I mean, I have, I sent you guys kind of an outline. Uh, I was just going through what we had, where we had mentioned accessory dwelling units in the Northwest area plan. Uh, so I'll give you kind of a primer today. We don't have everybody anyway, so. Um, my Lisa's got familiarity with accessory dwelling units as well, so she can certainly provide some insight. But I just kinda wanna give a broad brush overview, cuz I don't think we've. I mean, I think we, everybody knows what the concept is, but I don't know if folks are familiar with our current regulations. And then what would need to be changed in order for this to be allowed? And then, as I was mentioning, just kinda going through, um, the Northwest, uh, recommendations that Clarion came out with. Um, I think they're just kinda scratching the surface. But one of the things I was recognizing is that accessory dwelling units is probably the biggest, uh, carrot or incentive that we had to offer original town folks. So if we tackle this individually, I guess we should just be mindful of the fact that that carrot won't be there for any other design guidelines, you know, coming down the pike. So, um, I kinda saw that as our biggest, you know, selling point and, and trying to get it, get through, uh, or get some design guidelines approved. Uh, and maybe that never happens, but, um, and I also understand that the latest direction from the board and the conversation we had was to have like more bite-sized things. So just wanted to be mindful of that kind of piece of it. Um, and then I also know that there's been some concern about this concept of overlay districts. So just, you know, I guess be mindful of how you wanna tackle this. Uh, do we want it to be an overlay district? I don't necessarily know that it needs to be. I think that you could look at this as a code update, uh, in order to allow them. And then, you know, we just need to go through the code and figure out what language needs to be changed. And so I've added some slides kinda toward, toward that end as well to what I'd already sent you. So that's, um, maybe some new slides that just kinda cover what our definitions are in the code and, uh, areas that, um, influence, um, our current interpretation of accessory dwelling units.
I didn't look at the code, but we do have definitions in there.
We don't have definitely enough, I mean, we don't necessarily have definitions of accessory dwelling units, but we have definitions of what restricts them. So right now they're restricted by, you know, you can only have one dwelling unit on a lot and.
Okay.
Um, that type of stuff, so, uh, for residential low-density zoning at least. Oh, hey. I wasn't expecting you. Nice to see you. Um, so, you know, basically what we have in that, uh, Northwest, Northwest report was just, uh, some references to it. Though explore, you know, which is, I think is what we're doing. Uh, whether or not we want them to be in RL or just limited to, uh, or in R M or limited to RL is what, uh, Clarion had suggested. Uh, and then some considerations that we would need to do is, uh, how do you regulate them? And that's, this is some of the stuff that's actually in my, uh, report too. But, uh, the percentage of the primary dwelling, we do have some structures in original town that are probably even less than a thousand square feet for the single-family dwelling. So if you're gonna have an accessory dwelling unit, um, you know, is it gonna be a percentage of the size of the primary dwelling? Do you not wanna restrict it in that means cuz that may disincentivize it? You know, I guess where are we coming, like what angle are we coming from here? Um, and then how does that affect the character of the lot? So, uh, not only like size, but location. So some jurisdictions would require the accessory dwelling unit to be in the backyard versus like visible from the front of the street or, you know, kinda it's, there's this concept of accessory being accessory and the primary being primary and, and, and obvious and clear. So, um, in addition to that, there's, you know, some, um, I guess we wanna contemplate the height of these structures, um, whether or not we're okay like having a single-family home that's one-story and then a detached garage with a second-story, um, accessory dwelling unit over the top of it. It would, that would be a little bit more dominant, at least height-wise, than what you're gonna get for a single-family home at, at one level. It is, so we'll get into that too, but that's a decent example of, you know, you can, technically, a detached garage has a thirty-two-foot height limit. Um, and it doesn't have any restriction in our code that there's any relationship to the height of the primary structure. Um, so you can have, that's not an accessory dwelling unit cuz we don't allow it, but, uh, you can have finished floor area above a garage that's even-conditioned space. You just can't have sleeping quarters and you, cuz, uh, you can't have sleeping quarters without building certain building improvements. And then you're, you, you can't have an accessory dwelling unit which is really defined or a secondary dwelling which is defined by having a kitchen, a bathroom, and sleeping, sleeping quarters. So, uh, that structure wouldn't have a kitchen. I think it has a half-bath. And, uh, technically you shouldn't be sleeping there. Because when you're sleeping somewhere, you're supposed to, especially for a new structure, building code kicks in and you actually have to sprinkler anything that's new. That's a, so that there's all these other kinda costs and things that I want you guys to be a little bit aware of as well with, um, accessory dwelling units. Uh, interrupt me or jump in at any, any time with kinda questions. And, I mean, this isn't, this is more kind of off the cuff. Um, but, you know, this kinda outlines and, and this is some stuff that you've seen before in terms of, uh, the common, you know, uh, things to consider. Um, height setbacks, parking, whether or not you want an additional off-street parking spaces. I don't think we really did any analysis with the, uh, Clarion study as to, you know, whether or not we felt that parking was a concern in original town. Um, and, you know, Bob, you live there, Phyllis, you live there. I don't know whether or not. I think, you know, with our informal sidewalks that we have in original town, if you have a lot of on-street parking, you're gonna have more people further into the road to walk along or walk in the street in order to get from point A to point B. Um, so do we want off-street parking or do we want to require a third off-street parking space? That's just another something to consider. But any of the, I guess, all of these things kinda cumulatively, like if you start adding on the regulations, then you're disincentivizing the use, you know, uh, at least incrementally. Uh, design appearance, there's some, you know, we don't have any, uh, design criteria for like the single-family structure, as we all know. Um, but we probably could tie, like if you're gonna do something with an accessory dwelling unit to actually looking like the primary structure, having the same colors and finishes. If you wanted to, it would be a little ironic to have design requirements for an accessory dwelling unit when you don't have it for the primary, but having, uh, some, you know, I don't know that you want it to look like entirely different either. So, um, I, we're establishing the regulations. I think we could do it. It would just be kind of ironic. Um, and then utilities, this is probably the biggest disincentive for people to do it right now. Uh, any secondary dwelling would require separate taps and, uh, for water and sewer. And those fees for a new residence run around thirty-six thousand dollars, so it's not cheap. Um, but at the same time, it's also a source of income for the town. Um, so I don't know whether or not, I haven't had that conversation with our finance department yet as to. I mean, if we got a ton of these, it would have an impact and we'd be, you know, you still get, you're paying for water and you're paying for sewer, but it's on one tap versus, uh, separate taps. So, um, it could be an issue.
That feels like something to me as if we wanna incentivize, right? If you wanna incentivize ADUs, right, then you talk about the tap.
Yeah, if you wanna limit sizes and things like.
Well, and if you limit the size of the home, then maybe the.
Do a single tap.
Right.
If you.
Yeah.
Right.
You do this or if you want something bigger and then you have to bring a tap on.
Right. And then occupancy, I think the, the number one, um, thing that usually gets tied to occupancy is, you know, well, there's a couple of things, but whether or not you only allow ADUs for someone that's actually like an owner-occupied situation. So the owner could actually downsize and live in the ADU and rent out their primary residence, or they could stay in the primary residence and rent out the ADU. There's just a conception or, you know, uh, perception that like if you live at the property, you're paying more attention to it and you're, um, you're probably a better neighbor than if it both, you know. And it's also the same kinda perception that if you're renting out a property, you're not necessarily, uh, there and as mindful and as, as good of a neighbor as you would be necessarily if you were, uh, living on the property. So that's often done, but then we have different definitions about family. Um, but if you're gonna limit the size of an ADU to seven-hundred square feet, you may, we may not wanna have the same allowance of like three unrelated people allowed to live in a seven-hundred-square-foot structure. Cuz then you end up with, you know, multiple vehicles and all of those things. So it's just, the regulation component of the allowance is also kinda complicated. Um, so those are all things to kinda, kinda consider. Um. And.
How do we deal with the fact that we don't have any mechanism to enforce these things anyway? Like numbers of people living in homes and unrelated people? I mean, we, we've tried because we know it exists, but, and it's a problem. But the response is, there's nothing we can do about it. And so I'm wondering, I mean, I don't wanna create guidelines or, or regulations that we're not, you know, more than we're not going to enforce or can't enforce or that are unenforceable. But it's a little bit of a side topic, but.
Yeah, no, I get your point.
Yeah, it's a realistic question though, right?
Yeah. I mean, I, yeah, how do we?
Well, I think that there's.
How do you, how do you even control that the owner is occupied? I mean, and what are you gonna do about it?
We, at the, at the county, you got an affidavit, you know, like them signing that said that they actually did it. Um, or that they were gonna do it. And then if things change, they actually also signed an agreement that basically said they were gonna decommission it. And I understood what the decommissioning of the unit would be. So when I worked at Bowley County, they had two main types of accessory dwelling units that were allowed. One was for like agricultural workers, so you could have a second unit if you could prove that you needed it for working a farm or having some sort of agricultural use. And the other was for family members. So it was, uh, like if somebody needed care, um, but of course, that's usually kinda time-limited. So there was, uh, the agreement in place. And I never, I've worked on a few of them at the front end. I never saw anything at the back end about, hey, we're ready to decommission our unit, you know? So I think it's understood, but at least that there's a mechanism in place, you know? And, and it also, I think it controls, uh, I mean, whether or not it gets done at the end of the day. It controls people from going out and doing it without, you know, going through the process and getting themselves legally established though. Um, but, you know, on the other end of the spectrum, you know, there was an article that Emily sent me today that, um, you know, has, Oregon has just outlawed single-family zoning in the entire state in order to create more, uh, more housing opportunities.
What state did that?
Oregon, yeah.
Oregon, yeah.
So, uh, or they, they're considering it. I guess it's going to the, the governor, yeah.
Wow.
Um, and Seattle just did it and Minneapolis just did it too, like where they basically eliminated it in order to help address, you know, problems in cities that, you know, where they just don't have enough housing. And they're, you know, the goal is for them not to spread out, but to actually build up and fill in and all that stuff, so.
The Republican Senate is.
For the hills? So, um, but it is, you know, it's, it's not just here that, uh, we're dealing with these things. Um, but let's get to the presentation real quick. So, I mean, I, I like some better direction from you guys in terms of what, you know, the actual goal and purpose for ADUs is in original town. Is it additional housing? Is it affordable housing? Is it something we wanna just allow, um, because we feel like the housing requirements are too restrictive? Or are we trying to address affordable housing? And I, I don't necessarily know that, I mean, without additional provisions, like how do we control? How, I mean, are we really achieving affordable housing if, you know, we don't control how, what somebody rents their ADU for? And I don't even know if people, other municipalities do that. Uh, I think you control that to some degree by limiting the size of it, but not necessarily what rents go for. Um, so just things to consider. And then, you know, the impact on our infrastructure, we've already kinda discussed in terms of tap fees, uh, parking and on-street parking, uh, and then the impact on the character of original town. I've, you know, um, we don't have much, I guess, in, in place. Like, you know, David mentioned, you know, the, the larger kinda two-story garage going up on a lot in original town. Uh, and it's not, it has no relation right now to the size of the existing home.
Well, it's big. Other than it's twice the size.
Yeah. Yeah, but I mean, like, so if you think about, if you think about that like differently though, like, you know, if, if we had stronger regulations, we could either restrict that size or we could have forced that homeowner, I mean, like not necessarily forced, but like more or less kind of push them to maybe tear down that unit and build a, a different one. And then you lose the character of that, that original home that was there. Uh, so, you know, we certainly don't have any historic preservation components, uh, in original town now. And, uh, we don't have like the mechanisms that Lewisville does to help incentivize it. But, you know, in Lewisville, I've seen several homes go down as well, despite the fact that they have, um, all sorts of tax incentives to help you kinda pay for preservation and, and at least consider it. Um, so, you know, I just wanna know from you guys what we're, what we're trying to achieve. And also, I guess the question is, do we know enough from the public on, you know, this topic to, to move forward? Or do we need more, um, public outreach? So, um, impact on character, how to regulate location, that's kinda like that backyard, um, type of thing. But there's more, more to it than that. Like, do you want them to be detached separate buildings? Can they be attached to the back of the house or can they be above the house or above a garage? Can they be located in basements? Those are the ones that are almost, I mean, to Bob's point, a little bit harder to regulate, like, um, but we have a harder time regulating things that we don't allow than we do regulating things that we do allow. So in the sense that like if somebody wants to do this or wants to rent out something to, you know, somebody in their basement, um, and they're not really functioning, you know? Like, the big thing there is you can't have a second kitchen in your basement. If you do, you should have, you know, you should upgrade your, your fire code and have separation so that, you know, it's actually built like a duplex rather than built like a single-family home. And those are all costs that are associated with people doing these things, you know, kind of under the radar or without a building permit and all those things. But at least if there's a means to get there, um, you know, legally and that we would allow it, we would have somebody come in, like whereas if the answer is no to begin with, then they don't necessarily come in. And some of them still do it even if they, it's not allowed. Um, so I think that having an allowance for it gives you some path to, to getting there. Um, and then like what we just discussed, can the accessory dwelling unit be larger than the existing residence? And like, at what, how far do we wanna go with incentives? If we have a forty percent lot coverage requirement or maximum in original town, and I think everyone feels that's fairly generous. Um, but if, do we wanna penalize somebody if they're at, you know, thirty-five percent of that? Like they can't have the ADU or do we wanna be generous if it's a, you know, make an exception for an ADU? Um, and then we've kinda discussed some of the building code considerations. Uh, and let's see, what else? So just some of the, you know, this, this list is not exhausted by any means, but some of the benefits are traditionally additional housing supply, affordable housing, opportunity for residents to, uh, age in place. Uh, and then opportunities for residents, like this may be more applicable to, uh, Superior just in the sense that, you know, costs of, uh, taxes and whatnot are going up. And this would give some folks, uh, some supplemental income to allow them to, uh, help offset those increases. Um, and then what are the concerns? We've gone over some of this already. Uh, and then regulation tools. So bedroom limitations, uh, size limitations, uh, lot coverage limitations, height limitations, and then that architectural kinda consistency we've already discussed. So just to give you kind of an overview of where our regulations stand right now. I mean, I think you could argue that accessory dwelling units are permissible, um, in RM zoning right now. Um, in the sense that you allow, you can have a second, a second dwelling. So whether or not it's, uh, the trick is, I guess, is that you, based on our definitions, anything that's, uh, s- single-family, uh, is, is defined as a standalone unit. So I don't know whether or not we would, we've never had somebody come in and try to do another standalone unit on the same lot. I think we could come back and say, no, it's another single-family house. You can't have two single-family houses. If you wanna have a duplex, you can have a duplex. If you wanna have a triplex, you can have a triplex, but they have to be attached. So that might limit some folks' ability to add a accessory dwelling unit if we actually took that interpretation of it, um, based on definitions.
Yeah, I would mind that being on the list to discuss. I mean, if, if.
What's that? All allowing them?
Allowing multiple single-family units on, on a, on a lot in the town. I mean, it, it, I mean, it adds a little bit of flexibility for the exist, I mean, it might allow our multifamily to develop a little differently than coming in and being sold and turned into apartments or, you know, townhomes. I mean, if there's already a home there and you can throw another, there's room and code allows you to put another one, two, or three, or four, depending on, like I have a double lot. I'm not multifamily, but people, you know, across the street have.
Right.
Large lots, uh, that are platted, you know? Could they be permitted to just build single-family homes rather than, you know, tear it all down? Just something to discuss.
There's, there's very little, uh, RM zoning in original town.
The entire Fifth Street block is.
Yeah.
RM.
It's not, I mean, the rest apart from that, Rogers Farm, everything else is.
And then up, uh, and then the other RM is up by the dirt road.
Yeah.
So, next to the warehouse.
Or you mean on Coal Creek Drive?
At the end, the dirt road.
Near the storage center.
On the other side.
Okay.
That's all. Then we also have some, uh, uh, business, you know, right over here, uh, on Cross from Conoco, which that has multi, is that multifamily used by right? If you have, uh, you have the zoning map.
B C zoning.
B C, yeah, do you have multifamily?
Technically.
Does that have that by right or no?
It's B C.
Yeah.
So B C, okay, it's purely commercial, okay. Can you put single-family on B C? You can't even do that.
Not supposed to, but it's already there.
You have to get downzoned.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, they actually requested this, this zoning, I think.
Yeah, it's a strange little area over there.
So they're probably grandfathered in, okay.
Um, so the, the sprinklering requirement, firewall separation, we discussed, kind of, you know, some building code, all get with Ernie and, um, figure out some additional or whatever's, may, may also be in play there in terms of, uh, building code requirements. Um, and these are some of the definitions. So currently, we actually would have a minimum size, um, at four-hundred square feet. And I don't know why that number's magic, but that's what our code says. Um, and it contains the, the three elements I, I already mentioned, sleeping kitchen and, uh, bathroom, uh, facilities. Um, and then it's designed for use as one family, so you kinda have to understand what one family means. And that's like, so if you have a family, there's no numeric limit if you're all related. If people are living in a unit unrelated, then the limit is three. Um, and whether or not you'd want three people living in a four-hundred or a seven-hundred-square-foot accessory dwelling unit is something that you wanna, I guess, be mindful of as well. Cuz the more people that live there, the more off-site impacts you have on traffic and adjacent property owners and that type of stuff. Um, single-family home, this is where we get into that, uh, detached building. Um, and it's one unit, one lot, not containing any other, other units. Um, and then there's the permanent foundation. So there are some construction, uh, elements as well that are in play with, uh, even our definition in the land use code. Um, and then duplexes, two units, multifamily is three or more. Uh, accessory structures has all these, uh, different, um, criteria kind of associated with it. And that some of those get to what we discussed too, you know, that it's secondary to the principal use, that type of stuff. It's subordinate and smaller. Um, this is something that hasn't been, uh, uh, typically like applied for certain things. Um, certainly, we, we do have that limitation G that says not used for living or sleeping quarters. Um, but there are, uh, there's one in here in particular. Oh, so garages are, are kinda given the exception of being customary extension of a single-family home. So we haven't historically in town taken as strong of a stance on garages. So we have a lot of, well, not a lot, but we have some units in original town that have the house on one lot that was originally plotted and the garage on another. And technically, you know, based on this definition, your accessory structure's supposed to be on the same lot as your primary structure. You can't have an accessory structure before you have a primary structure, that type of thing. Um, so some of these, uh, even some of our code, you know, should be re-looked at uh, in terms of how we've actually applied it. Um, so that's kind of a, a general overview of what some of the elements are that we'd have to go back and look at. It's not exhausted by any means, but, um. How would, uh, the short-term or rental housing, remind me how that would play into this? I assume it's the same that applies to our primary unit. Yeah, but I mean, that's, to me, is the obvious use for these is popping up and you start doing Airbnb. We don't, I don't think we define it, so I don't know that. It's just not addressed at all.
Disallow it or allow it.
So the, like, uh, Rock Creek Ranch, I think, doesn't allow them, like in terms of their HOA and their covenants. Um, but I think our code doesn't necessarily address them, so.
So if we go there, we should kinda talk about that and say whether they can or they can't.
Or if you don't define it, then I guess you're saying they can.
Yeah. Right.
If we don't define it right, then it kind of lumps in with everybody else doing it. But it feels like we should ask the question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I feel like there are a lot of things that we don't, I mean, that either aren't defined or we don't enforce or don't have a way to enforce. And I.
So.
Really wanna think about, I mean, cuz getting, getting, part, part of the reason this came up, couple of reasons this came up. Um, there was a lady who moved out of town cuz she wanted to do exactly what you described in here. She wanted to flip her garage into a, into a, a dwelling unit, move into the, into the garage so she could afford to stay here. And that's one of the issues here is that, you know, the people who've lived in original town, this has been sort of an affordable area for people to, to live. And now that's starting to change. Taxes are going up like crazy, you know? And it's, it's getting expensive to, to live here. So they're an opportunity for people to stay as they get older and rather than leave, move into something smaller, maybe rent their house. That was one of the things that came up. The other is, there's so much of this going on already, you know, illegally that we don't enforce. Then, you know, but if, if we're gonna turn a blind eye, then why don't we just say it's okay, right? And now how far along you go to say it's okay? I, I, I don't know, you know, what the rules are. And part of the problem is those of us who wanna do things by the rules.
Right.
Are frustrated because you look around anywhere and see lots of people doing it anyway. And, you know, and then you sit there and go, well, okay, I'll go ahead and build a garage with a second story. I'll leave it open, get my, get my final approval. And then a little later, I'll go throw a hot plate in a dishwasher and some bathroom and a bedroom up there. And next thing you know, you know, running out of BRBO, which is what goes on around that town, around our town now. So, um, I'd just like to get that addressed. And either we enforce it or we allow it, you know, either we do or we don't, but.
Right, well, I think, I guess for the enforcement piece, it's more of a, I mean, it's not that jurisdictions don't have. And I guess it could be a home rule versus a statutory type of question as well as the. So for our town attorney or, you know, Dan, next time, he's here to kind of address, you know, what limitations we have. I know that about every year, we talk about home rule and we never get there. Um, but I also think it's also just, uh, direction from the, you know, the board as to whether or not we wanna have a stronger presence like in enforcement. Then we probably need, you know, maybe more staffing cuz we have one person.
Oh, you don't even deal with it when it's complaint-based. Uh, we're told it's complaint-based. I mean, you gotta, you gotta house over here with a sign for the business on top of the door. And you won't enforce it, right? It is a two, it is a two-story building and there is a, there's a, uh, an organization running off the second floor with a sign on the door and six people park on, on Third, Third Street every day, lined up along people's way. We've complained about it. Town doesn't do anything about it. So complaint-based doesn't work. Uh, so I, part of this, I think, is, I mean, we need, we need to, I just need to decide how we're gonna handle these things, right, or if we're gonna handle them, I guess.
I appreciate the concern, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna make every decision around this discussion.
No.
Be based around if it's an enforcement issue or it's what should be in our code. And I think there's a lot of things that if there's some things that are unclear in our code or difficult to enforce in our code, you know, we could choose to tackle those should the town board want to. But relative to this discussion, I think we set up the code in a manner that is enforceable in the areas that we want to. And we do think about what provisions we want and recognize where enforcement might be challenging. But I don't, I don't wanna get too far down the road of like, well, we never do this and then we don't do any of this. So just.
I'd just like to ask a question. Can we do thing, I mean, would, would we be structuring something that is purely applicable to original town or would it also apply to the rest of Superior?
We would, I, I assume that it's original town. That's your direction. But, uh, the, we have different zoning, uh, you know, we have a P D, so we have to change the rock. And then we probably have to involve the HOA, who I don't know where their stance is on.
No, I mean, it's, I mean.
But this discussion as, as it related or evolved out of the Northwest area plan only concerns original town.
No, no, I, I, I understand we're talking about it, uh, original town. But you, you talked about possibly accomplishing it by changing the code. Would that automatically bring in?
No, it really, we just applied a primary zoning, yeah, so.
So it wouldn't affect Coal Creek, Copsinger, Stagamore, who don't have HOAs, so they're not?
No.
Cuz they're under a P D?
Yeah, they're under a P D.
Yeah, they're still under a P D.
So how about we get, should we get into the, like, section? Should we break this up? How do you guys wanna move the discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, why don't we go back to the top and just start, start with your questions?
Kinda take straw poles maybe around and see what we wanna, how we land?
Well, one was wise, you know, and I, yeah, I mean, I alluded to some of that, which is, I think people wanna be able to stay here. Um, I also think it's a great place for a little bit more affordable living, which is what we've had around town, right? I think we need people. We need residents in town. I don't think that our retail that we're desiring to have built can be supported. And so where there's opportunity to increase population a bit, I think is gonna help the economics of the town. But that's gonna bring parking and issues and some other things as well, but.
I do have concerns since I live in original town. I don't like having ADUs at all. So I guess my biggest thing would be I probably wouldn't vote for it. My concerns are it ruins the character of the town. It, parking is already a problem. If you go down Williams Street, it is bumper to bumper to bumper all the way down the street. Where are people gonna park if they add more housing? I, I just don't see it. And one of the things Stephen brought up was I really do think there needs to be more public outreach. Definitely. So those are my three biggest concerns. And like I say, I just, I, maybe I'm too old to be doing this, but I just, I just don't like the idea of it. So that's will be my.
Well, I, I appreciate Phyllis's comments and I agree. I think that generally I do support the concept of ADUs, but I think you need to be thoughtful kind of about how you consider them. And agree that public input related to what regulations matter is really important. I don't wanna presume to know if parking's an issue or not. I don't wanna presume to know, you know, kind of how it's gonna impact the character or what kind of character issues matter. So I would like to hear, you know, more public outreach, absolutely. I think the general public comments we heard are, yeah, we're interested in this topic. We'd like to explore it more. Kind of that's what I feel like I heard. So I'd like to continue on the discussion. And if we hear, you know what, we're not interested after they really think on all those topics, then I wouldn't wanna pursue it. But for now, I feel like we should continue the discussion, at least where I'm at.
Yeah, I agree. I think from a public input standpoint, we definitely need more outreach. I feel the same when we had, um, the public in here, um, a lot of the comments were, yeah, we're interested, but need more information. You know, one comment that made it about, uh, and, you know, her town resident leaving town because she wasn't able to afford it anymore, you know, that kind of strikes it. You know, like if, if there's an option to be able to build on your own property to be able to remain a resident and that's like really your only option, I think that that kind of opens my eyes to, you know, it's extremely important to, you know, push that extra step and, and view and see if it's, if it's viable, so.
Is, is there any way that somebody can get approval to build an ADU at the moment?
Well, I think that it's theoretically possible on, in RM zoning, just because you're allowed to have multiple. But you'd have to pay, so like where most ADU regulations, you probably have some incentives in order to, or some like reduced requirements in order to facilitate them. We wouldn't have any. You'd have to pay thirty-six thousand dollars in tap fees, even if you added a four hundred or, you know, five hundred square foot building in order to have separate water and sewer for a second unit.
I was really thinking of the case that Bob was talking about. I mean, if this lady had come to the board and said.
Uh, no, yes, she tried. She came to the town. Not only she went to the board, she came to the town, but she wasn't allowed. You're not allowed to turn your garage into a house.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I typically codes don't allow a use variance. So this is kind of a use variance, right? You can get a variance to a setback, but it's hard to get like a variance to allow another unit. It's more of a use thing.
It's more of a code change, yeah.
Yeah, it's a code change.
The other thing too is income generation, right? Cause it allows people to generate income and helps them stay in this area, so. And they're doing it, right? I mean, that's, there's BRBOs in town, there's accessory units being used, so it's, I know it helps, helps people from an income standpoint to stay in this area.
Yeah, then in moving down the list, I think from, um, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller jumped in.
I mean, I think I echo all of your comments. I'm generally always in favor of letting a homeowner use their property as much as they can and are, and are able. And anytime, you know, there's this dormant grass sitting around that someone could be living on, I'm generally in favor of that. So I'm definitely for studying further, but also getting input from the community before we be too presumptuous.
Regarding tap fees, um, I think we need more, you know, more study and more input from Public Works. I would love, I would wanna kind of know what are like the actual fixed key costs related to, and, you know, connecting into the water system. And I feel like if there's actual costs to the town, you know, related to that through permitting and construction and oversight of that connection, I feel like at a minimum, the applicant should pay for that. I don't know that we should require, I, I do feel like I'd like to incentivize them to some degree and maybe we don't waive, or maybe we waive kind of the, the profit portion, but that's just my initial thought. I don't know. I could go either way on that.
I have a question for Stephen. The thirty-six thousand is just for tap fees.
It's all the fees, I think, that's associated with like a new development, which would be the school and park fees as well. But the bulk of it, it comes in your water and your sewer fees.
But does that include cutting into the pavement and hooking up to the line and redoing the pavement? So that would be another cost to the, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think from a tap fee standpoint, that is also somewhere where, you know, we're talking about incentivizing the builder to the size of their main unit. But I also think that you can look at it as, and, and maybe not, but utilizing that as an incentive on, or to make it affordable housing, that you can say, you know what, we'll waive these tap fees, but you have to set your rent at a, you know, at a variable range, right? That, and, and maybe possibly in, increased five percent a year or whatever, but it requires them to be able to get waived on the tap fees or a certain amount, you know, and have a sliding scale and say, you, you rent out your space for X amount of dollars or somewhere in a range. I don't know if we can set a standard rate for rent, but somehow kind of do an incentivization that, that way for.
I like that conceptually a lot. I like that idea. I know we don't have a program in place, but the county, you know, manages a lot of the affordable housing. So it could be worth a conversation. I don't know if it's in Boulder County, if they have a mechanism to help manage that over time. I think that could be a good way to incentivize, you know, a, you know, kind of permanent affordable component on the rent.
Or, or it just meets a, a certain time requirement, right? For ten years, you know, whatever, whatever that dollar amount would be, you know, reduce your rent by three hundred dollars a month. And then once that, once you hit your tap fee or whatever, then you're free to charge what you want. So, and then that kind of as, as the years go on, we may have, you know, in year one, you know, you have ten ADUs built in year two. And then with those rolling, if you keep pushing those out, then you've got affordable housing throughout a certain range.
Well, the other option is, is allowing it to be on a single tap fee, right? Or being on a single tap, I mean.
Right.
Not requiring separate tap.
Yeah.
The other variable that we haven't really mentioned is, and I don't know that it kind of works against incentivizing ADUs, but, uh, I think that there's a lot of units in town that have multiple lots, you know, so it's, and right now, like if they're, some of them are developed without, or were developed without any, any, uh, thought about the, how the lots were divided or they were developed before and then the lots were planted afterwards. But that's one way to, I mean, if you wanted to take this incrementally, ADUs could be, you know, allowed for folks that already had multiple, multiple, you know, lots. And then you would allow a second unit regardless of whether or not, or how those original lot lines cross the property. Um, I don't know how many ADUs that would get you, but it would certainly be kind of like more of the thought that, you know, if you have a, a a platted lot, you get one unit of density. And then, you know, would take away some of the constraints that are associated with folks building over lot lines or, you know, building too close to setbacks or, you know, whatever. Um, so. I don't know how many of those we have and I don't know what kind of inventory Clarion did when they, I mean, they did it to some degree to kind of calculate how many units we had in original town, how many lots we had, but I don't know if they actually correlated that in relation to how many units like are enjoying ownership or whatever, so. But every, I mean, like every lot that I've ever looked at in original town is different and it has different circum, and it makes it interesting, but it also is like, you know, we have a definition in the code that says that, um, you know, your front, your front lot or the front lot line is your shortest lot line. So we've had, you know, applicants where they have built along one lot line. And if they actually split it to go with where their house was, they would flip their setback. And they didn't build it to that setback. They built it to the other setback. So they're kind of stuck, even though they have like seven thousand more square feet of space to build. They didn't build, you know, they had one front orientation and now they have another. So it, it's complicated. And they're all different. So I think that in general, like I think folks in, and one of the things I guess I, I feel like we heard is that original town's unique and it should continue to be unique, but I also think that people live there because there's no HOA and there's, you know, flexibility to do what you want with your property. And if that's the consensus, then I think that, you know, relaxing regulations to some degree or, you know, is, is something that the original town residents seem to support, so. But it, this may be bigger than looking at just ADUs and maybe looking at all the kind of regulations and seeing what, which ones actually make sense and which ones don't and which ones are constraining and which ones might, you know. Cause I don't think that, I think the biggest thing with our zoning is that it's kind of a one-size-fits-all zoning and doesn't necessarily fit with the original town. And it doesn't fit especially with units that weren't built, you know, to those standards. They were already there and they don't comply with those standards, so.
Another thought on tap fees might be to not, if we're ever worried that, I don't think this is an issue, but if you're ever worried that somebody would deed it off and sell it separately, if they don't have a separate tap, you know, that kind of forces them to stay together.
Well, and if you, I mean, you could also, to the same extent, that if you, you know, have, like in, in Boulder, if you were to develop a lot or, you know, you would actually have to combine those two pieces together. Like we don't have any formal mechanism at this point in town where like if you built over two properties, you still technically have two properties to redevelop. You'd have to tear it down. But if you, in, you know, in certain jurisdictions, if you build over two properties, they become one, you know, like.
Yeah, well, if that's happened to us, we got replatted. I didn't realize we did, but I mean, we were replatted as one on our corner. If you look at the Boulder County.
Well, if you go to the.
You're not platted though.
You're not platted. It's probably just an assessment thing. Right.
Oh, cause when we bought it, it was, it was, it was showed as divided.
Boulder County's lines aren't, aren't platted lines necessarily.
Gotcha, okay.
So in assessment wise, some folks would go in and try to get like, uh, like prove to the county that, cause you're gonna get taxed more for having a vacant lot, I think, than you are to have a residential lot that's developed. And technically, if you're built over both, you're probably in better spot to be
Yeah.
Considered one residential family or one residential lot versus one vacant plus one residential.
Yeah. Okay.
It looks like a high priority meeting. I was curious if anybody knew why we were half mad.
Do we know why? I don't know why.
I don't.
Somebody. An officer in Afghanistan was killed. Maybe that's why, I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't actually know.
Nope.
Sorry. Thanks.
What was your last question or your last statement, Lisa? I'm sorry.
I lost my train of thought. Oh, plating and tap fees. And I agree with you in theory. I think there's a lot of issues in our code as it applies to old town, original town. That in an ideal world, we would clean up. If we're able to kind of dig in, if the board, you know, lets us muck around and all that a little more, I think it would make a lot of sense to clean up kind of when and how, if you have more than one platted lot. You know, either kind of requiring those be considered as one permanently or not so much once you do with it. Or, yeah, I think that's a good, I think that's a good conversation. I don't know that, I wanna connect the ADU discussion to that.
Well, I guess the, the ADU piece, like to, I think it was Jason that mentioned, you know, like selling it off separately. It wouldn't be possible if you.
If they're considered one.
If they're considered one, if it's not on a separate lot. So, I mean, at least it would be difficult. I guess they could con, make it a condo or something and sell the airspace.
We could do that though in this code. Yeah, we could do this in this code. If you, if you have an ADU on your lot, it shall be considered one lot for the purposes, you know, until the ADU goes away or something.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause right now we would, I mean, it's a good point in the sense that we don't really have a mechanism to say that.
Yeah.
You know, you can't divide that differently or whatever, you know, so. But you would need a tap for sure, so.
And size limitations is a tough one. Cause our code currently doesn't have restrictions. Well, some, I mean, it does, but I mean, not, not in relation, not, not relation to, to another dwelling on the property, right?
So, yeah, I mean, like, I think that if your original house was eight hundred square feet and you had a percentage off of it, it may not be, and you may not be incentivizing that person to put a separate accessory dwelling unit. When if you looked at it from a lot coverage perspective, they have eight hundred square feet and they have another eight hundred square feet, they'd still not be very impactful in terms of the forty percent lot coverage. So, you know, I don't know that that's, maybe you have a minimum or a percentage and it's whichever is greater. Whereas usually you have something that's a minimum. And, uh, and it's whichever's less, but in this case, it might need to be, you know, a minimum of eight hundred square feet or whatever. And you could actually, you could tier this however you want it to. You could say if you have a, you know, a structure over twenty-five hundred square feet, this is how big your ADU could be. If it's under or within the fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred, you could say it's this square footage, you know, you can make it as tailored as you wanna make it.
My initial thoughts relative to size is, I think by definition accessory, you know, kind of implies secondary or incidental on a lot. However.
If you live in a twenty-seven hundred square foot home, then that makes sense. But when you live in a.
Right, but I don't, right, I do wanna recognize that we've got a lot of little homes and I don't wanna be arbitrarily over restrictive to the point where it's not feasible. I would rather, I think, approach it, or at least I'm just talking out loud a little bit, but I think my approach would rather be the property needs to maintain a character of a single-family home, right? So if you have an ADU, can't look like a duplex. The entrance needs to not be visible from the street or it needs to be kind of around the back, right? But if the, but if you can't really see it from the street and it's twice as big as your main house, I don't think that really matters if you're still needing your setbacks in your lot coverage. So that's my initial thought on that. I don't know. But I also think at some point, maybe we put a cap on overall size that could apply to any ADU, no matter the size of your home itself. You know, no more than eight hundred square feet. No matter how big your original house is. I don't know. I'm curious.
I was just wondering, you're looking at this. I mean, I don't think I really care what the ADUs look like or even how big they are. Could you solve this whole problem just by rezoning it all as multi-family? Or RM instead of RL?
Depends on what problem it is.
Well, we were saying, I mean, at the moment, at the moment, they're all zoned at residential low density. So you could have a one dwelling unit.
You wanna watch original town, I mean, not, not, not that financially I would complain, but if you wanna watch original town go way fast, that would, that would be a way to do it. Cause the, the value of that land would skyrocket so high that it would be hard to resist somebody coming in here and just buying up six blocks and building townhomes, right? So.
And if they wanted to do that, I don't think I'd buy it because it's going on already.
Yeah.
I think one thing that's different, if you think about just allowing two units versus allowing an accessory unit is typically your accessory setbacks are a lot less and your primary setbacks are a lot more. So if someone, you know, wants to create kind of that backyard cottage, principal setbacks probably would get in the way of that. So you, because it's a single-family home in two units, you'd have to amend the code a little bit on other things.
But if you did that, I could turn around and my two, what is it? Six, six, what's, what's RM? Six houses per?
Uh, six units of density or whatever per, I can't remember. It's, I think it might be up here.
But that, that would mean I could take my two lots, you know, just tomorrow and turn them into townhomes, right? Or apartments or, you know, next door to a single-family home.
I was a bit concerned about those six duplexes or three duplexes that have gone up on Williams Street. Which I think would look rather attractive, I mean.
Yeah, they're not bad.
And they're not bad. I mean, I, my, my sense is that at the end of the day, that's what. And they're not bad, I mean, I, my, my sense is that at the end of the day, that's what's original town is going to look like. I mean, it may take ten years, it may take twenty, but at the end of that period, that's what original town is going, that's what most of original towns.
I feel like that's a fundamental difference that would be pushing it a little too far.
That's pushing, there is RCS.
Unless the public wants, public input wants to go that far.
We have RCS as well, which is, that would be.
Don't you have to have property owners' permission to rezone their property?
Yes and no.
Yeah, I think you do.
I mean, yes to rezone unless you do kind of a citywide legislative rezoning.
I never heard that.
There are only one hundred and twenty-one existing homes, huh? So I don't know how many.
I don't know that we'd be, yeah, yeah. To me, it's a whole other thing. I don't know that we wanna put there right now.
I'm not.
That's a, that's a big change. RCS would be, be as far as I would even discuss if, I mean, I thought about talking to neighbors in our street, cause that came up a while ago, but.
There's only a hundred and twenty-one existing homes in original town, I mean, to go through all this exercise for, I mean, even if you think allowing people to have ADUs is a good idea, to go through a really complicated exercise to produce, how many do you think, how many of those one hundred and twenty-one do you think would actually?
That's, you're right, yeah. I think the likelihood of seeing more than ten in the next five years is, I think ten over the next five years is probably as many as we would see in a realistic, like realistically.
If you're assuming we're going after this purely to build more dwelling units, if it's to give people the flexibility to do it.
I think we should, but yeah, I don't think it's gonna like proliferate on every lot.
I mean, it, it just seems that the effort is out of all, I mean, you're not gaining a whole lot, uh, and you're making it, I mean, you're doing it in a very complicated way. I'm not quite sure. What's RCS?
That's a zoning that we defined a while back and never, doesn't apply to any, never applied to any neighborhood. It, it gives you, um, it stands for residential character street is what it stands for, so. It allows three units per lot, I think, uh, to be something like that, it, but it allows you to have, um, uh, commercials, so you could have a doctor's office or a, but it has to have a residential character, right? It can't be an office building, right? So it allows you, which we have that going on in town, too, you know, I know there's at least two businesses that are running out of these homes in town, right, that we just overlook, right? And so the, the, there, there are a few other things, but, you know, it gives you a little more, it gives you more flexibility, um, in your zoning, it lets you do more. But it could create commercial in here, too. That's the other drawback, right?
I mean, there's so many different, I mean, there, there's so many differences in the houses in original town at the moment. But they're trying to set sta, I mean, that's why you've got all these questions coming up. It just seems that, I mean, try, try to resolve, try to answer all these questions for ten particular homes.
I think a lot of the questions would come up if we started talking about rezoning or to allow two units on every property. I think we would also talk about parking. I think we would talk about character and size and, so I don't know that you get around the discussion. Maybe you do, but.
Well, it depends. I mean, I, I mean, I, when I started out on this, I thought, well, it would be nice if original town didn't look like Coal Creek Crossing. You know, I thought that's more character, but I, I mean, as I've watched the development go through, I mean, the old trailers have been taken out. New houses are going in, we're getting the whole new development down on the Rogers Farm property. I mean, basically, it's only a matter of time before most of original town ends up looking quite a lot like Coal Creek Crossing or Sagamore. I mean, I, I think that's pretty much.
A little more eclectic, cause it'll be different developers, but, yeah.
But, I mean, that, that, I think, is what's, because the land values are pretty much there already. I mean, if, if you look at the, what, what are they asking for those, uh, lots down by the creek, I think? I mean, the cheapest is two hundred and fifty thousand and the most expensive is about four hundred thousand. I mean, this is not going to stay an eclectic, uh, community with five or six hundred, square foot old cottages on large-ish lots for very long, I don't think.
One thing that occurred to me as I was listening to David is, you know, there are different ways to attack this, I guess, depending on what you wanna achieve. And I'm just thinking through this, but you could propose that you allow the seven thousand square foot lots to subdivide and have a second, you know, like, and, and not have a seven thousand square foot minimum. So if you actually subdivided, you know, it wouldn't be an ADU, you would need a separate tap and all of those things, it would be a second dwelling. But if you were to cut these parcels in half or whatever and then you limit the square footage, you know, obviously something less, but then you have parking, you develop all these things as individual units. But you'd have to, the, the trick would be having the alley accesses improved, cause you don't have frontage on both sides.
Which we did on Maple Street.
Right, so, um.
It can be done.
Yeah, it can be done and, um, but that might be like a, a more simple way to kind of attack something if you want, if your goal is density. And, you know, actually smaller houses, you know, that are more in character with what you, what you have here. So, um, you know, if somebody wanted to divide, you know, and he had a thirty-five hundred square foot lot versus seven thousand square foot lot, you guys would be creating the zoning parameters for those new lots and, and it wouldn't be changing the zoning parameter. It would be a willing party that came in and, and changed their seven thousand square foot lot with forty percent allowance and all that stuff to have two units of density at, you know, something more restrictive, so. That may not be a, I mean, a bad option, actually, um, to consider, but it wouldn't necessarily be, be smaller in a sense. It would be affordable, it would achieve some of the character concerns, I think, that have been brought up. But it wouldn't necessarily make things affordable or way to tap fees or incentivize anything.
I think it facilitates some, it might then, you couldn't do a basement unit, right? So if you wanna allow some of the other types of ADUs, it wouldn't allow something like that. It could be an option, though, you know? On, on a single family lot, you could do an ADU. Alternatively, you could split the lot and build a separate standalone unit, kind of within the parameters of, you know, the goal of allowing ADUs if a homeowner wanted to split it. We could, you know, a code amendment related to subdivision requirements or something.
I wonder how, what we're doing narrowing the scope.
I know.
It's just supposed to be a primer.
I think everybody's asking the same questions, yeah.
I'm primed, it's just going too complicated.
Well, it feels like there's one part that should be addressed no matter what and it's the, in the primary dwelling unit, those separate units that are already created or in the basement. And I mean, I couldn't even do that in Sagamore and I know some houses have, who have done that. So I'd hate to limit that almost to just old, original town if it's something that's being done in, you know, a bigger part of the town. But yeah, the ADU thing.
How many houses in original town actually have basements?
I don't know, my neighbor does, uh, sorry for.
I would guess maybe six, ten.
Yeah, not a lot.
Less, less due than, or less.
A lot of the homes, unless they were built, like some here on William were built recently, they may have basements, but all of the old ones like mine, you know.
That's what I thought, actually.
Now, in a redevelopment situation, they likely would, but, you know, if somebody came in to tear down, right?
Well, it's not close to the creek. I mean, some of the ones are on the creek.
Yeah, not on the creek, yeah, not that close, you can't. Even our water table's a little, like our, some pump next door, there, there's some pump and their basement runs constantly, so.
I just, I hate to spend a lot of brain damage on this if it's to benefit a couple homeowners. But if, you know, if we can do something that doesn't take a lot, you know, that's easy to get done. Cause I think the scale is, is very small. And if we can help out a few homeowners without spending, you know, a year talking about this, great. But if not, you know, in my experience so far in this planning commission with the original town study is then, we talk things to death, the town board talks things to death. Nothing gets done and I hate, I would hate to go through that process for something so small of a scale. And I always think about this at work, I feel it's embarrassing if we can't get something done. Or, you know, those people with the obvious lots where it's like, that's just grass back there, why not plot down a unit? Uh, whether through subdivision or to an ADU. If we can't make that possible for them, it's, it's a little embarrassing as a town that we can't, you know, make more efficient use of space. But that's maybe where we're at.
I, I, I kind of, I was thinking more about Stevens, you know, allowing the seven thousand square foot lots to be subdivided, then, then, there are no, I mean, you're just permitting that to happen and it just, it's just a smaller single family lot, right? And it's, the effort's not that great and it almost accomplishes the same thing. In fact, it probably ends up with a better unit, right?
Yeah.
And you could keep it and rent it, it wouldn't be an accessory dwelling unit, it would just be, if you wanna own it and subdivide it and build it and rent it, that's your business and it's, or you can sell it, it can be, right, so.
I'd wanna look at setbacks, though. You start getting some of these lots and you split them in half and you have a twenty-five foot front, you have a twenty-five foot rear and you have a sixty foot lot, you have no development capacity on that lot.
There's not a house in town that's got twenty-five percent, twenty-five foot setback, I mean.
Well, but that's what the setbacks are in the code, which a new structure would have to come into.
You're right, if we change that, the setback would have to be addressed, you're right.
If you come in with a new building permit on a lot you just created,
Yeah.
I don't know that.
That's the, that's the real trick, I mean, with any, with any of this that we're discussing is like, we don't have, I mean, everything's so different in original town and we don't have an inventory of it. So like, I, I feel like you, we need to like, come up with what we feel like are good standards and then apply it to a handful of lots and see whether it works. And I think that it would break in some respects and we'd have to adjust, you know, and then, I think it's kind of an iterative process. And it's, and it's primarily because every lot is seemingly different, so like, but, but I, I think it would achieve a lot of the same things as you're thinking through it, like, you know, if you have to provide two parking spaces on this new lot and you have to have, you know, if you're limited to forty percent lot coverage, it might still be fine, but if you're creating a new lot that's only thirty-five hundred square feet, you can set your own parameters. We just need to figure out what those parameters should be to incentivize it, you know, make it worth doing, but while at the same time, like, kind of controlling the, the development, you know?
Yeah.
But, um.
Yeah, I think, like, I'm thinking about, I, I agree with you, I feel like we spent a lot of time talking about things. I would like, I think from my next step perspective, I feel like a survey with questions related to all of these issues. Hey, original town, does parking, is parking important? Yes, no? If so, how many spaces, right? Is owner, aunt, living on the property important? Yes, no? If, you know, that type of thing. And that will help us narrow in, you know, how flexible or how not flexible these can be. I don't know that I wanna go in and ask a bunch of open-ended questions. I also think we should get something done, right? Like, I like the idea of taking, here is ADUs, we heard ADUs, we're looking at how most communities in the metro area accomplish this, that's pretty time-tested and, you know, pretty, um, maybe we, maybe we rip up in the, you know, box and try and think about all sorts of other options, but then we just start gonna talk in circles for the next two years. So I think a targeted survey, asking really specific questions on kind of all the development parameters, you know? Does it have to match the existing house? Does it not? Can it be in a basement? Yes, no? All of these things and trying to kind of get the sense for what original town's comfortable with. We could ask the question on the survey, too. Can you divide your lot in half further and just build a standalone house to sell it off? I think that would help us understand what to craft an ordinance around and then, you know, that could be something we get done.
Does the first question have to be, are, are you in favor of ADUs?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Cause I think that, I'm with you that, from the public, I heard it's, people are interested.
And I also think another question should be, are you likely to build one in the next five years? You know, what is the appetite for this? If we get, you know, one person in town, do we wanna go through all this? If we have twenty people say, yeah, I would really be interested in doing this, you know, depending on how it shakes out. I'd like to know their appetite, I'd like to know yes or, you know, yes or no, do you support it? How do you feel about all of these things? And then I think we can develop the standards, you know, meeting what the public is interested in seeing. That's, that's just my thought.
Okay. No?
No, I, I don't, I don't, I, I've, I just haven't seen a survey do all that well, but, I mean, I mean, getting people to answer it, where are they from? Can you prove it? I mean, we, we had people sitting in here and we just, we just had little clickers got broken in a meeting. And that just blew up the entire hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we spent on bringing all these people together, cause we had one problem. Can you imagine a survey going out there? The clicker's broke.
No, I'm saying I don't know that we should do a clicker survey.
No, no, I'm not saying that, I'm saying we brought them here with clickers and it, we can't use that data. Because the clicker's broke in a meeting. So now you're gonna put out a survey, who are you gonna prove, I mean, I don't know, right? One, I don't think people fill it out. Two, who does it go to? Does it go to everybody in original town? Where, where does it borderline? Is it multi-family? Is it single family? Is it industrial?
Everybody in original town. And I think you do, maybe, you do a mailing survey, there's not that many. You mail it to all the property owners and the tenants that live in original town. And you, I mean, if we don't do that, I don't wanna do that. I, if we don't hear from original town and do some public input, we're wasting our time because nobody's gonna adopt anything, cause we're gonna talk in circles and the board's gonna kill it, cause one person says no.
So we do, we do a survey and if we get minimal response back, then we're like, alright, there's no interest and we're done, we wipe it off.
What's your gut feel if we crafted some sort of ADU, uh, you know, code amendment? Is original town in support or against, you know, this overwhelming one where?
Should we have a new ordinance and have a public hearing and they do it that way?
Well, I mean, that's, I'd hate to go through all this if your gut feel is.
Well, I mean, listening to what we just went through for the last two years and the, and the support we had for ADUs, short of the fact that the clicker's broke in one of the meetings, there was high support for ADUs. I mean, that was the one thing that came out of that, all that work, that, that people wanted ADUs. I mean, that they were, they thought that was a fine thing. Of all the things we were talking about, that was a fine thing to do. So my gut says, that in general, the neighborhood is interested in doing it, um, that's all, but, yeah.
So would you rather just draft the regulations without public input?
So when you were saying that everybody was saying, yeah, they wanted ADUs, was that everybody that was in the room or was that?
It was a high percentage.
Right, but were those all res, uh, original town residents? I think that's where the question comes in. Was, were those questions asked of everybody, whether from Rock Creek or Sagamore or wherever?
And we have that data.
Are we now just talking about original town people?
We have that data, though. I mean, I don't know why we've never pulled it out and shown everybody what it is, but we have the data. The question was asked, whether they were from original town and that, those sets were, I, my understanding was that they were, the data could be pulled, but.
We can look for it.
Yeah.
Every time I ask, it never, it never gets produced, so maybe it doesn't exist.
No, I think that, I mean, I don't remember if it's, if it's a specific question on.
I, I've even asked for the raw data and I got a, I got a report in a spreadsheet, and so, I, I'd love to look at the raw data.
But the problem, I mean, the problem is, is that the question wasn't, uh, asked, you know, are you from original town? Right, it was asked and so you get a, a certain number, but there's no way to tell the ADU answers.
Unless people pass their clickers around.
What's that?
Unless people pass their clickers around, they wouldn't.
Oh, so it was specific to that? Oh, okay, alright, I didn't realize that, okay.
But, uh, maybe, and, yeah, I mean, you might be right, I mean, cause I've never, I've not seen that data, I've not, it's not been.
So if it's tied to it, then yeah, that, that would be easy to pull and just be like, alright, here's, here's the interest.
I know.
I think people, it's easy to, like, I would, I would have the same concerns that Phyllis is, you know? It's easy to say, hey, generally, these are a good idea, but when you start asking more in-depth questions and they start thinking about, oh, yeah, there's gonna be parking issues, oh, how do I feel about, you know, size, things like that? I think it helps them really dial in how they really feel and can help set the parameters for an ordinance. If we don't do public input on this, I have no interest in continuing to talk about it unless we're willing to just draft an ordinance and take it to public hearing and see what happens. I don't wanna just talk without public input.
So are we done?
I, I missed a G, I mean, unless we're willing.
We have to talk without public input in order to get, we're gonna have something to present to the public so that they can, I mean, we can't just,
I, I mean, I think.
We, we have to talk in order to do it. I mean, I, I mean, I know that was sort of not exactly what you meant, but I mean, it, we've,
Agreed.
We gotta go through a, something here.
Absolutely, no, we will guide this, but if we're not, if we're gonna say, I don't trust any survey or I don't wanna do a survey, then, then we need to either say, okay, we're gonna draft an ordinance.
Yeah, that is a way, that's, that's a way to approach it, right? It's, it's to go through, go through just the, the normal public process, which we would do regardless, I mean.
Yeah.
This has to go through public process.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it goes through a public hearing, but I would rather hear from the public upfront how they feel about parking and how they feel about size. I don't wanna presume.
And how, how many people? Cause we get vocal minority complaints, we get, I mean, and I, and I, and I, I mean, let me just apologize upfront that I've been in this town for twenty-five years and I've been involved in this town's stuff for twenty-five years and, and I've watched every- And, and I've watched everything, every which way there is to watch it, and so I, I there, there, I, I, party says just screw it because we can't get everybody to agree, and we're not going to get everybody to agree, right? So then what, what does agreement look like? And is it five people come and they agree, is it a vocal minority? Do we need, do we need fifty people? Do we need one family, right? We have one huge family here, is that family bring seventy people or sixty people to a meeting? Is that, is that as important as thirty people that come that live across the residences, right? How do you? How do you do the public input, you know, in such a way that we can trust it and get the appropriate feedback? And, and I'm open, that, that's what I think needs discussion if we're going to do, you know, in order to get through this process.
I think there's a lot of different ways you can do it and I think all have their pros and cons. I keep coming back to, you know, maybe a, a survey that gets mailed to the property owners.
I like that, I like, yeah.
So that we can control who go, who it goes to and who responds.
And it's one, one per household.
One per household. Or two per household if each adult wants, I don't know, I mean, we can set that stuff. I mean, I, that, I don't know, we could also allow public input in a lot of different ways, but I do think we need to make sure that the Original Town residents are, were able to understand their responses. I don't, I think we need to know that we have reached out to these people and these are their responses. If other people want to weigh in too, that's fine, but their responses, we need to be able to differentiate their responses.
You could send out a, a survey and then set a work session, you know, so that questions can be answered and clarified and all that stuff. So that, and then, you know, hopefully those surveys come back and then maybe a week later or whatever, two weeks later, the work session occurs and you can kind of discuss the results and, and get, and make sure that, because we've had some people that have answered questions, even on that clicker thing, that have then answered or asked a question afterwards and been like, oh, I didn't understand the question.
Yeah.
You know, and then you don't get the, you know, right result. But I, I, I think that if you kind of laid out the, the survey and sent it out and give them, you know, several weeks to respond and then even more time to know that there's going to be a work session and, you know, some future month.
Right, you mail out a survey or you say, you know, here's a postcard, we're going to be mailing out a survey. Prior to that, we're going to have a public open house and there's going to be a presentation on what all these things are, where we're not taking feedback, but we're there to answer questions, right? You can go, then we're here to answer all your questions, here's a presentation, and then here's your survey, give us your name and address, mail it in, drop it in three weeks later. I don't know, um, I just feel like there's got to be a way.
What's the presentation, I mean, where's that information, like, no, keep going, I'm just.
What's the presentation? The presentation is like, here's what an ADU is, it could look like this, it could look like this, it could look like this. Does having it match the existing house, here are some things, having it not ma- just kind of introducing them to all of these parameters that I think Steven included in his presentation. So they can begin thinking about it a little bit. Parking, sometimes, sometimes communities require parking for these reasons, sometimes they don't require parking for these reasons. So that they can think on kind of how that, what, how that might impact them in their neighborhood. So you could go that way, right? To your point, I think, which is good, which is, you know, they might not know how they feel about it until they, you know, just reading one line sentence, you probably could get more if they choose to by hearing a presentation on all the issues.
Well, and I think that even the, the concept of it being discussed helps, I mean, like, if you do a survey, or you get a, send a survey, sometimes you take the time to fill it out and sometimes you don't. But if you actually feel like, oh, planning commission's working on adopting regulations for ADUs and we want to hear from you or looking or considering regulations for ADUs, this is your chance. If you don't respond, then, you know, you don't get to influence the process. But if they just feel like, oh, it's a survey and they don't know how, how much weight a town's given to it, then they are even less incentivized to actually fill it out, so.
And that, well, that's my.
Very true.
So now, I mean, we're hearing different things, right? That we don't want to proceed if we don't get enough responses, right? So that's why it's a struggle, right? If we put the survey out but we don't, don't get responses, does that mean we don't do it? Do we do this, you know, do we do the survey with a plan that we are going to move forward with this and here's the survey and here's your input and? I mean, you can go two ways with quietness, everybody's fine with the idea, keep going, or everybody hates it, or third, nobody's paying attention anyway, right? So it could be any, it could be any one of those three things that, that's going on. And you could argue one way or the other, I mean, it tends to be people who are deeply concerned about something that come forward, right? Those, those who, who don't want something to happen tend to be the ones who jump up and say, wait a minute, this, you know, the people who think it's okay.
How would you propose we move forward?
Oh, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know yet, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm hearing mixed things, I'm hearing, do a survey, but if we don't get enough responses, then let's not put the work in. But then I'm hearing, let's do a survey, but then let's do a presentation with a survey, which means we have to put the work in in order to do the presentation, I know, that's what, so, I'm just, I'm just trying to summarize some of the things that we're hearing, right?
No, but I think when, when we had the public here.
Do we write the ordinance and see if people respond?
Yeah, but I think when we had the public here, a lot of the comments that we received were like, this is great, the, the planning commission is working on all of these elements, right? This hasn't really gotten this far before, and so it seemed like we had a lot of public, you know, involvement and, and kind of excitement, right? That, that I hope that we could draw on that, is that, you know, we should be able to draw on that excitement and just say, this is our next step, or this is a small part of our overall plan, but we need your input, right? And it just needs to be like, this is your area.
And I'm game for that, I, I, I'm game for a mail survey, I'm, I'm going to say one per household because there's going to be multiple ways for input to come in for multiple people in households. I, I think it's one per household and, and just to see what comes back, you know? And if husband and wife want to write their comments on it, like, I will read them, there's only going to be, it's only going to be a hundred and twenty of them, right? I mean, how many are there going to be, so, you know, Daryl will do that and I'll, you know, we do that anyway on the surveys that come in. So, you know, we'll get, we'll get it, you know, we'll get feedback from it.
I think it's difficult, I think that, you know, I understand your point, like, I don't know that anyone really has defined what consensus is or what, you know, like, and, and a hundred percent is impossible, you know, for any town. Um, but it's particularly probably Original Town. Um, so that, it, it's a hard thing to start off on, you know, trying to tackle again, especially since the Northwest Area Plan didn't get the same endorsement that we kind of thought we would. But I, I do feel like ADUs are probably a little bit of a different animal in, in the sense that it's, it's an allowance. You know, like, if we don't get responses when we're offering Original Town an allowance to do something that they don't technically have, you know, like the right to do right now and, and to perhaps incentivize it, then maybe they don't want it. Or maybe they're not paying enough attention to, to, for it to be something that's, that's worth, you know, the six months' effort in order to get some regulation for a hundred and twenty-some houses, you know, of which twelve may, you know, follow up on it, so. Um, but I, I, I would be surprised if we didn't have, I, just as many people out here saying, this is something that I would be interested in, this is something that I would wa- would want to pursue if it was allowed and particularly if it was incentivized or we didn't have to pay tap fees or, or whatever, so. Whereas before it was such a big thing and some of them were regulations that people were a little, you know, gun-shy about just because it was, you know?
Well, and I wouldn't be surprised if we get a lot of support through it just for, I mean, people who look at it as it will help their future investment. And if, if they have the flexibility to do that, then.
Right, why would any, I mean, possibly from Phyllis, why would anybody say no?
I mean, there will be people.
For the same reason Phyllis said no.
Yeah, same reason.
They're on the boards, yeah.
Yeah.
Because it does impact your, I mean, like, if you don't want it and your neighbor has it, then it still has an impact on you. And if you feel like traffic's an impact, it has an impact on you, but those are things that we should hear about. And then, you know, to, to Ben's point, it's, I think that, you know, like, it's possible that if, if ADUs gain traction in Original Town, that we look at them in other areas as well, so. Right, I mean, it, it's not that it can't be, you know, like, it's only restricted, but the, and then the way our code technically reads is if it's not addressed and, you know, certain, um, plan developments, then it kind of defaults to the code. And I don't know that anything ever restricted it other than, you know, especially if somehow we define it as it not being a secondary, like technically being a second residence, it's an accessory residence. I don't know how you do that though. So I think right now, like Sagamore is restricted because you get one unit on one lot and until you address that differently, then, you know, you, you couldn't have it, so. But if you had, you know, the support of all your neighbors or the majority of them, it could be something that gets considered as being amended just like Original Town, so. But for clarification, if there is a second kitchen in a house in Sagamore, that's not. It's a duplex, it wouldn't be allowed, yeah, yeah. And it's even more concerning when those things happen without building permits, because there's a fire hazard there is, it's just, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there are, but I mean, that's what, you know, so. What were you going to say or did you have a question?
I'm, so if we do the survey, and I know you said everybody in Original Town, I am really struggling with people who this won't impact having, getting the survey.
Are there people in Original Town you think shouldn't get the survey?
Yeah, the multifamily zoning and the industrial and the business and the, they're not impacted by any of that, but they have no impact on this?
Oh, yeah, industrial, I would say.
They have light industrial, multifamily and business.
Well, it depends on when we say multifamily, if we think it should be an RM or not.
Yes, well, that's fair, yes.
And I think that's a survey question we should send out to.
Well, that's the, that's all the people in, off, forth between you and Chris Street.
And up on the other side and.
Sort of down towards the, uh, storage area at the end of Coal Creek.
Well, I, I, I guess I'd argue the opposite, because I, I feel like when you buy somewhere, whether, whatever, if you bought an industrial property, you bought knowing the zoning and the conditions around you. And we're, if we're thinking of changing that, it's fair game for them to comment on it.
I think you could do.
So then they don't get to comment either because they're right up against it?
I think you could do this.
If you're, if you bought.
Then, then, then that becomes an argument too.
Like, I bought knowing it was Boulder County open space behind my house and if someone wanted to come change that, I'd have serious opinions on that, but, you know.
So you could, you could do the same buffer we do for public notice. So it, you know, what, do we have a fifteen-hundred-foot buffer? So we could say all properties, you know, zoned RL and RM, one of the questions is, should it be an RL and RM? But all properties get a survey within fifteen-hundred feet, same as our public notice requirement, but you have to put your.
It's a thousand, right?
Or it's a thousand feet, whatever it is. It's the same logic, but you have to put your address so we know where your property is.
What about people who already, I mean, there are at least, like, there are at least three classes of people who live in, uh, the original, Original Town. I mean, there's people who own the properties and live in them, uh, there's renters, and then there's people who own properties and also rent properties there.
So who gets the survey, right?
I, I would think that for the survey for the zone area, I mean, I understand everyone's point and I'm all for public, you know, notification and transparency. But I think what we're trying to understand is whether or not Original Town property owners want to have this allowance. I think that once we get to making a code change, certainly the notification would need to be better, broader, and we have to get feedback from everybody else. But all we're trying to answer now is, are you interested? Would you do it, you know, like, and is this something that we should be looking into? And if they say no, then who cares whether or not an adjoining, adjoining property or, you know, somebody within a thousand feet has a, you know, so.
Yeah, that's fair enough, so. I would still think if you're zoned something other category and you're in Original Town, you're going to be dealing with the spillover effects from parking and.
Right, I think all of us, I mean, like, we have Original Town that's zoned light industrial that's developed as residential, so I would have a hard time excluding them from something, but.
Can you repeat that, I was thinking about that.
We have that stretch of Original Town, you know, off Coal Creek that's zoned industrial, light industrial, but it's developed as residential. I mean, it has storage, but it also has.
It has two people, it has two people living, two families living.
Right, yeah, so I would think that it's probably appropriate to, you know, have the boundary be all of Original Town, so. But like we said, this was supposed to be a primer, you guys certainly welcome to think about it, we, we're going to meet in two weeks for a development application. We can have this on the agenda to kind of bring the other commissioners up to speed and get their feedback and then, you know, start working on or discussing, you know, what that survey kind of looks like or whatever, so.
Do we have anybody we use to develop surveys or do we just make them up?
I'm sure there's been a consultant hired in the past to develop surveys.
No, it's been a fortune, but.
I don't know how, yeah, or if there's something you can find online, uh, that discusses this.
Yeah, it's just the whole, you know, the whole statistically valid, I mean, it's just always, somebody's reason to argue about something.
Somebody wants to pull pulls in a survey, they're.
Oh, they're going to, right? Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Things that always bothers me a little bit about surveys is you, it's difficult to tell whether, if somebody's answering it, how important it is to them on a scale of one to ten. I mean, if somebody sends me a survey, I'll often answer it, but I mean, it might not, I.
But he might not care.
Hardly care at all, or I might care a whole lot.
Yeah, you could do the like, is adding an ADU on my property extremely important to me? Somewhat important, I have no opinion, I mean, you could do the range, you know, so there's, if you want to try and gauge like, level.
And who, yeah, we, what do you?
I think this is a, we would be opening a can of worms if it would be better to be closed, I don't think there's enough benefit to be cut out of doing this, to make it worth the effort.
Change it all to multifamily, put it on the agenda and see who shows up.
That feels like.
I'm entertaining at least.
Uh, uh, yes, or whatever, uh, alternative that Steven.
I don't think anybody wants.
Call it David's, David's rule. Okay, so.
You guys have any more thoughts or any other things you want to share or just put it on the agenda for after the Thrive discussion on the sixteenth?
Yeah, do you want to maybe summarize what we talked about to the commission, just to get them to be thinking about it before the next meeting? Just basically, we kind of talked about a survey that we went over this.
Sure.
And then, just a email that summarizes this conversation and everything from multifamily recommendations.
It was pretty clear, right? Anywhere from let's write the code now to let's not do anything.
No tangents, right?
Good luck, Steven.
I'll ask him, will you do that?
Yeah. Delicated.
She took good notes, I'm sure.
Anything else, anybody have anything else? We have any announcements of any sort that we?
Other than that we'll meet in two weeks, which I've already said, so, um.
Does the poll their permit yet?
No, we've heard that they're supposed to be coming in this month or by early August in terms of their tenant finish. Um, but nothing formally submitted yet. Uh, we do have applications in for, uh, Toll Brothers we submitted and, uh, we gave comments back to Zaharias, that's probably going to be a little while before it gets to the public hearing. Um, and then we do have the, uh, the Morgan Ranch application for downtown Superior, so, uh, that will be the crux of my review probably for the next five or six months, so.
Any permits pulled in Old Town for any of these lots recently?
Um, I think that, well, for Roger's Farm, I think lots are starting to sell, they started their, uh, sales trailer and we've gotten a lot of inquiries on those properties off of Third Avenue. I think some of those lots and they've been signed as sold to the ones along the creek. But I, I don't know that we have any building permits for them, I'd have to check, um, I don't know that I looked at the latest, um, building permit report.
One of the people, one of the couples in Coal Creek Crossing sold the house so they can build on that for a creep.
Oh, did they?
Could just be gossip.
Alright, that it?
I think so, yeah.
Alright, we're done, thank you.